Okay, everyone, the regular meeting of Lakewood City Council for May 15th, 2023, is hereby called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, Chief. We will now pause for a moment of silence, remembering especially Patty Ryan, our former head of the Chamber of Commerce.
Baker?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Keppel?
Here.
Litton?
Here.
Marx?
Rader?
Yep.
Schachner?
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held May 1st, 2023.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. And with that, I'd like to move item eight to the top of our agenda this evening.
Item eight, Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board Annual Preservation Award Presentation.
Is there an actual presentation to be? Sure. Just tell us where it is. Oh, it's in Greenwich, of course. I got it. I think we'll be advancing slides for you from up here, just to warn you. And your microphone might not be on either.
There we go. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Definitely works.
Hi, thanks. Glad to be here. My name's Peter Ketter. I'm the current Chair of the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board. So we're here every year to present historic preservation awards to projects that we find around the community that we think exemplify good historic preservation practices. So you can advance to the next slide.
I think it's on the left.
Okay. Yeah, this just explains what the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board... Oh, there we go. Thank you, yes. May is National Preservation Month, so this is nationally a time when preservation organizations try to celebrate preservation activities in their communities. And you can advance to the next slide. And so in Lakewood, that's traditionally been when we've offered our historic preservation awards, again, just to raise awareness of good preservation practices in the community and recognize property owners who take those extra steps to do exceptional projects and really contribute to the quality of life in the city. Go to the next slide. So that's just explaining pretty much what I just said, which is, again, we're honoring exemplary projects. These are projects that we think have made significant contributions to the quality of life by preserving historic and architectural resources in Lakewood. So the first project, and before I jump into the specific projects, just a brief word on our process here. So the way that we do this at the Heritage Advisory Board, these are not projects that are nominated by anyone. There's no formal nomination process. So what we do as a board is we comb back through ABR agendas. So we look at Architectural Board of Review agendas for projects that are doing substantial work on historic properties, and we split those up among the board members. And so we look for projects that we think are good candidates and then go around and visit each of those to look and see if the work is finished. And if so, we bring it back to the board with photographs, and we all review the various projects and decide collectively on who to give awards to. So we don't have a set number of awards or set categories. We just try to comb through everything that we can to identify projects that we think are worthy. So the first one we have here is a front porch replacement project, and we're honoring Frank and Karen Conway, who are the owners of the house at 18176 Clifton Road. If you can go to the next slide. So this shows the house prior to the front porch being replaced. A very lovely home to begin with. This was built in 1914, again, on Clifton Road. And certainly, nothing wrong with the stoop that it had at its front door, but I suspect that, like many Lakewood homeowners, they were really interested in having a more expansive front porch that they could enjoy. How important are those to our community, just both in terms of the architecture, but also that social element of having a welcoming and inviting front porch where you can greet your neighbors? So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the finished product. And so, again, this is, you know, a front porch replacement. As far as we know, this isn't, you know, this is not something that was historic, that was restored, but you can see in the design of the porch that it's very fitting to the house. It looks like it belongs there, like it was always supposed to be there. The proportions and the details are very consistent with the house itself. And there's still a reflection of the small stoop that was there with the gable over the entry. And we just thought a really nicely done porch. Again, not that things have to be kept exactly the way that they always have been, but when it's, you know, when someone desires to make a change or an improvement to their house, to make it compatible in this way, we think really contributes to preserving the character of the neighborhood. And in this case, we think really enhances the front of the house. So I believe that the Conways were planning to attend, but I don't see anyone jumping up, so we'll just hold on to their certificate and get it delivered to them. You can go to the next slide. So we actually have a couple this year that are garage replacements. And again, it's something that sort of seems basic and utilitarian, but the design and construction of a garage can have a big impact on the streetscape. And it's, you know, always, we think, valuable to consider the design of these additions or, in this case, separate detached garages. So the first one we're recognizing is on Clifton Boulevard, 13926 Clifton. Heather Rudge is the owner of this property, so you can skip to the next slide. And you see on the right is the garage that was constructed in the back. I actually don't have a before photograph for this one. This project happened several years ago, but at the time, Heather was actually a member of the Lakewood Heritage Advisory Board, and we have a policy of not granting awards to members of the board. So she did not win one, but the members, the members of the board this time specifically brought this up and really wanted to recognize Heather for this garage project because it is such a nicely executed garage that's very compatible with her historic home and we think contributes very much to the neighborhood. Can go to the next. The second garage replacement that we wanted to recognize is on Freeze, 17601. Elizabeth Kelly is the owner. If you can go to the next slide, I do have some before photos here. So again, kind of your typical utilitarian garage. This is on, it's a corner property, so the garage faced out onto the street and really has a prominent location within the neighborhood. And a very nice home constructed in 1921. The garage was pretty diminutive at the time, but if you go to the next slide, you can see what was built in its place. So on the left, you see the house from the corner, and on the right, you see the garage. Again, very much in keeping with the style of the house, the materials, the form of the garage. And also, I'm sure, gave them some really nice functionality with the patio in front. And so, again, enhances the streetscape, consistent with the architectural character of this house and the neighborhood, and really has a very nice impact on the street. So we commend Elizabeth for her great work on this project as well. The next is the most substantial home rehabilitation project that we have, and maybe one of the more substantial ones that we've seen in quite some time. Many of you are likely familiar with this house at 14604 Clifton. And we're honoring Cory and Tammy Gregg, who do not own the house today, but owned it and were instrumental in the rehabilitation project. So you can see here the house before the rehabilitation. I'm sure, again, many of you remember the pink house with the tile roof. But you can see from the before photos, it had fallen into disrepair, quite a bit of interior damage, really just in need of a comprehensive rehabilitation. Built in 1909, a beautiful house and a lovely property, but again, really in a bad state when they started this project. If you can go to the next slide. So there's several photos of this completed property. There were some enhancements at the garage and the creation of that terrace on the second level. But the main facade of the house, really just beautifully restored. You see the roof. All these character-defining features of the house have been preserved and restored to their glory. It was repainted, so it's no longer the pink house, but a very attractive color. And if you go on to the next slides, I have some interior photos as well. So again, you see the interior details of this house, very thoughtfully preserved. You still, and, you know, again, looking back at those before photos, you saw what kind of condition some of these things were in. So I'm sure not simple task to bring a lot of these back, but they retained all these significant features and really celebrated them within the house to create a contemporary home, but still with all of the historic charm and details that we all love in Lakewood. Next slide. Just some more views. Again, just beautiful work, and we're very, very glad to be celebrating this one tonight. And so I believe that the Greggs are here. In fact, I know they're here. I met them before I came up. If you would all like to come up and get your certificate. Make sure I've got the right one here. There you go. Would you like to say anything?
Oh, I mean, it was a really fun project in the beginning. I was getting some PTSD seeing those photos of the condition of the house. But yeah, very large project, maybe more than we expected. We originally looked at the house because it was kind of in our price range, and almost as a joke, our Realtor was like, hey, let's go look at this thing. And I quickly realized that it was, we could still do something, but it would take a different direction, and we had some really good people working with us. Sam Gometro, Claire Connolly, and of course, our general contractor Burgess did great work in the house. And they do a lot of new construction, very modern-looking buildings in, like, Duck Island area. But he lives in Lakewood, down at the end of Nicholson, and has a really good appreciation for historic homes in Lakewood, and he really loved to be part of the project. And we, that was in the forefront of our minds, doing it right. And to the point where it turned out to not really be so profitable in the end, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't change it. We had a great time, and we thank you for recognizing the work we put in.
Thank you very much. Good.
Really a great project, and thank you for your contribution to the community. So our last award is actually honoring you all at the city. We really thought that it was important to recognize the good work that was done at Cove United Methodist Church, now, of course, the Cove Community Center. And it's so important as, you know, the stewards of public buildings and owners of buildings that come into the public sphere, to do the right things with them and to set a good example for the rest of the community. And I think that Cove Community Center is really a great example of that. You can go to the next slide. Those are really dark and difficult to read, but I'm sure most of you remember what this building looked like. And not just the state of the building, but also, in general, churches are incredibly difficult buildings to repurpose. They're obviously constructed for a very specific use, and that just makes them difficult to even find another compatible use for. So the fact that the city had the vision not only to acquire this and find an appropriate use, but then execute the project in a very sensitive and complimentary way is very much worthy of recognition. If you can go to the next slide. I know that the roof replacement wasn't part of the original plans and was probably very painful at the time, but again, even when that discovery was made, it wasn't, you know, the decision was not to just throw the cheapest asphalt roof you could find on the building. The shake roof on this church was such an important defining feature, given just the size of it and the prominence of the roof surface in terms of the architecture. So finding a good, compatible roof replacement material, certainly a challenge, and we appreciate that the city took the extra effort to make that happen. And then, again, just the interior, I think it's a great reuse of this space that otherwise would have a hard time finding a new use. And now, I know, very active and well-used and will be, I'm sure, for generations to come. So thank you to the city, and we have a certificate for you, too. So, thanks. Who's going to take it? That was it. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to come before you and share these great projects. And again, thanks.
Thank you. It was an honor to hear about them, and kudos to all the Lakewood residents, current and former, as well as this administration and council that have been honored tonight. Well done. Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes, which brings us to item one.
Item one, report from Committee of the Whole Meeting, held May 8th, 2023.
Yes, as I'm sure you're all well aware, due to the front page news, I'm just kidding. Council met on May 8th, our committee of the whole met on May 8th, I'm sorry, and we allocated $1.5 million plus of our $2 million in ARPA dollars to distribute this year through that meeting, essentially agreeing on projects and initiatives that will address accessibility, quality of life, public safety, housing access, and affordability, and more. And they're all itemized as part of a resolution that'll be later on in the docket. Moved or received and filed this report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? We talked about it a lot, so I don't want to give it short shrift, but we've covered it quite thoroughly at the same time. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item two, ordinance 12, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately to amend Section 14414, original appointment to the Division of Police of the Codified Ordinances with the purpose of modifying the lateral hire process, and we have a substitute.
Yes. I'll first move to substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and for discussion's sake, first, perhaps, Director Vargo, would you be willing to comment on any, or I'm sorry, no. Director Dillinger, would you be willing to comment on any and all changes that relate to the substitute?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. So the original language that was presented at the first council meeting and discussed at the Committee of the Whole was changing our language essentially from two off our entry-level civil service exam list to one lateral, changing it from one civil service entry to one lateral. And I had made mention that we hadn't had time to discuss with the union yet their feelings on that, and we had since done that. And Chief Kowcheck and myself had a nice discussion with them, you know, hearing their concerns. And we were able to come up with new language that met the needs of what we're looking for, to have a little more flexibility, given the high, the low amount of officers that are available and the high demand that all the departments surrounding us are facing. So we came up with the language being adjusted to the percentage of lateral entry patrol officers hired shall not exceed 40% of the hires made from the civil service entry-level certified eligible list during the preceding rolling 12-month period. So this will be the same language we present to the Civil Service Commission tomorrow for their approval as a rule change as well. And if Chief Kowcheck has anything to add.
I don't. We talked to the union, they're good with it, so I think it's good to go.
Fair enough. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Councilman Bullock. And remember, this is a motion to substitute at the moment.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, Chief, the language about up to 40%, I mean, do we now expect as a new norm that up to 40% of an incoming class or cohort of officers would be lateral as opposed to from the academy? And historically...
I don't anticipate that.
Okay.
As of, the way the old rule was, we had, we could hire one lateral for every two off the list, and we never came close to that number. But we just want to have the flexibility that if an opportunity presents itself, that we can make offers a little more freely to laterals. But I don't, although we're doing it with foresight in case a situation arises, I don't anticipate using it to its full extent.
Okay. I saw, you know, an article about a neighboring community, not ours, that the applications for a police exam are very, very, very low. So I understand that, you know, this is something, we want good personnel, we want to be able to have many options when we're considering our hiring. So I'm glad that we're, you know, thinking ahead. But historically, over the decades, we, what's the proportion of lateral hires, you know, that we've had compared to academy?
Historically, laterals have been very low. I mean, probably the first year we implemented lateral hires, we hired one, you know, out of 10 years. Since then, we've, I think we've hired five since I've been chief, and two of those we parted ways with pretty quickly.
Okay. So the spirit of the ordinance here is that we have the flexibility that in some years we may want to avail ourselves of up to 40%, but our, we don't anticipate that that's going to be the norm.
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none on the motion to substitute. Madam Clerk. Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. So with that, and now that we have a substituted version, I believe we wanted to adopt it on second reading tonight, just for the sake of expediency and making these higher. So I move that we suspend the rules and adopt ordinance 12-2023 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock.
Just to review the process, so after city council considers this, it goes to the Civil Service Commission? Is that right? I don't recall without...
I believe it would, anyway.
Yes, Mr. President, through you. Councilman Bullock, it will go to civil service because we'll amend the rule that's established through the civil service rules, so we'll be asking them to amend that rule tomorrow night.
Okay. Thank you.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Sorry, yes, we have three steps here. Now I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any third times the charm on discussion? Anyone? Okay. Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And ultimately, that motion passes. Thank you, everybody.
Item three, report from Housing Planning and Development Committee regarding meeting held today, May 15th, 2023.
Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you don't mind, okay. The Housing Committee met today, prior to tonight's council meeting with all members present. We discussed a proposed ordinance related to ensuring that certificates of code compliance be not only required, but conducted and then fulfilled by property owners that change their use from owner occupied to 100% rental. There was some discussion about the background for this and what's involved in complying with it. It was also discussed about the scope of this, would it apply to commercial properties? In theory, it could, but in practice, really, this is focused on residential properties since most, I don't know that we know of a case where an owner occupant lives in a commercial scale, either mixed-use or residential apartment building. So the spirit of the proposal is that the health and safety of the property be ensured prior to it becoming a non-owner occupied rental. So, for example, carbon monoxide risk from water heaters and furnaces that use natural gas, electric, and plumbing issues, fire, fire safety and prevention equipment, to make sure that all of that's in compliance. What we have in the books for some years, for some decades, really, is that when a residential property owner sells a property, transfers the ownership, a certificate of code compliance is already required when it goes from owner occupied or owner occupied rental to full rental. But if you don't sell and you retain ownership and become a landlord, our ordinances don't currently address that scenario. So this, that's the proposal, is to make sure that we do capture those properties where that change of use takes place. And, you know, the committee, the committee thought it through, heard it, and supported the proposed change to increase the housing quality and the consistency of our safety compliance of our residential properties. So we concluded by recommending adoption to the full council. We do expect some additional information and reporting from the Building Department when that's available. And with that, I'd like to file, move to receive and file that oral report.
I'm sorry. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item four, ordinance 9, 2023, an ordinance amending Section 117301, certificate of code compliance of the Codified Ordinances to require inspection and certification of all properties formerly owner occupied that become rental properties.
I'll first move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and as part of our discussion, we do have one resident or individual, anyway, signed up for public comment on rental inspection, so I'm presuming it's on this topic, and that name is Mica, I believe, Zacken.
I'm good. My questions were answered before the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always good when we can get things taken care of. Any further discussion on the ordinance and the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item five, report from Rules and Ordinances Committee regarding meeting held today, May 15.
Chairwoman Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Rules and Ordinance Committee met tonight to address two issues, one from the Lakewood Youth Council, which is a very impressive group of young people, who have chosen to bring forward changes to their ordinance that allows for a change in, first of all, I'd like you to read, I'd like to read you their purpose, because it's very impressive. And their purpose of the Lakewood Youth Council, established in 2019, aims to provide a voice for youth in the community, allow students to interact and inform the community leaders, provide opportunities for youth development, and allow for engagement with topics regarding youth, health and safety, youth advocacy, community relations, and community outreach. This council is a core group of diverse students and advisors interested in leadership and commitment to meaningful community change. This body further aims to establish public-private partnerships between this council and local enterprises, engage and create a presence in the community, and collaborate with nonprofit organizations, all with the overreaching intent of serving youth in the community. So, a great mission, and they really work hard to accomplish it. So this would be the second piece of legislation that we would be passing that has been brought forward to council. So that's pretty incredible for a young, young group of people. So what they've recognized in creating this organization was that by design, they had election of officers at the beginning of the school year, only to find that by many of those people who were seniors, by the end of the school year, they were very busy with other activities, with college and proms and all the things that seniors do to keep them very busy. So they, they're looking to create a change whereby that they would have those appointments of officers at the end of the school year, rather than at the beginning of the school year. So I think that was great. And they also recognized that because of their busy schedules, as they move into adulthood, and we all know how busy we get, that they found that many times they couldn't meet quorum at their meetings, because some of the students had other activities and events that took them away from these meetings. So they did change that requirement of how they addressed absences. So they handled it in a very professional manner, and I'm very impressed with how they managed to create the change. So, job well done, and I'm going to look to move to receive and file this report, and I will recommend adoption to the full council tonight. Then I will also go on to report on Elswa.
On, right, yeah, so you're gonna, we'll receive and file, the whole, the whole-
Got it.
Little shebang at once, yeah.
I need to work with them. Thank you.
And then on the ordinance.
So, now I would like to address the ordinance that Elswa brought forward, that was to give a little more power to the animal control officers as they move forward with complaints on barking and howling by dogs in the community. They have created, worked with the mayor's office to create some change where, whereby, after a certain number of, once they had addressed these issues, they had greater leverage and earlier intervention with regards to resolving recurring violations of the ordinance. So they, the animal control officers will have a greater weight when called forward for nuisances of barking dogs. So this, I move to receive and file this report and recommend that both of these be adopted by council tonight.
I'll first second, and then I have a question. Second? And so as part of discussion, I, Chairwoman Marks, I believe that ordinance is on second reading tonight. So was it a hope that we would suspend the rules and adopt tonight, or?
Yes.
Or our full three readings?
They would like us to suspend the rules to adopt tonight.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that from your minutes.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to receive and file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item six, ordinance 11, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately to amend chapter 50513, barking or howling prohibited of the codified ordinances, for the purpose of changing the penalty for repeat offenses of this section, adding gender-neutral language.
I'd like the administration, perhaps, just to help me understand why an intent would be to suspend the rules and adopt on second reading tonight. Just because it tends to be a question we're asked.
Sure. I think it was out of consideration and respect for the advisory board, but from an administrative standpoint, it is not necessary, Council President.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules if anyone feels like it's necessary and imminent. Hmm? I'm sorry.
I think following the regular process, Mr. President, is fine. We can let it defer and go to another reading. I don't think it's oppressing. I think what we heard tonight from the committee was that it's not a super pressing issue, it's a, it's a kind of a rare occurrence, and letting it proceed through the regular channel should be fine.
Okay. Pardon? Oh, okay, thank you. All right, well, then I'll move to defer.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes. Item seven.
Item seven, resolution 202320, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the amended bylaws of the Lakewood Youth Council.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I want to note my appreciation for our Lakewood Youth Council and its work to get us to this point. All right, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item nine, item nine, communication from President Litten regarding council ARPA allocations.
Yes, as, I won't read the communication verbatim, but just as noted earlier in my summary of committee of the whole, the following two resolutions will allocate the $1.5 million worth of, and change, worth of ARPA dollars that council has to distribute, noting that it's two separate resolutions, so that a conflict of interest or a potential one can be avoided through Vice President Keppel and her involvement with the library. So we anticipate that she would abstain from voting on that, that second resolution, but on the first one is basically everything else as a bundle put together. I'll move to receive and file this communication.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock.
I just want to thank you for your leadership on this. This has been quite some time, incoming, quite a lot of effort and doing. Thank you, Mayor, for your collegiality in working with city council on this. What's the benefit? Well, on our, in our following resolution, there's a good dozen different purposes and a lot of community input, and a lot of good assistance, and a lot of good reinvestment in city facilities like parks and other things. So it's been exciting, and this is one of the most impactful deliberations I've participated in, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman. You've been on council since 2008, is that accurate?
Let's say 2018, so that I can get a decade back.
Ending up.
But yeah, that's true.
My, my point, of course, being that I really appreciate that comment, given the breadth of experience you have on this council. I have also appreciated the conversation. It's, it's an example of, I guess, sausage making at its finest, the way people talk about legislators doing so. And because of all that work, and that's sometimes gray and challenging, we've been able to, I think, thoughtfully distribute a pretty substantial and generous sum of money to some of Lakewood's most important departments and organizations and projects. So, thank you for that, Councilman Rader.
I'll echo my colleagues' thanks to the council leadership, both Vice President Keppel and President Litten, for really leading this charge. You know, a very participatory process, which is, which is really refreshing and great to see, ahead of maybe some of our neighboring communities. So I'm really, again, glad Lakewood's leading the way. One comment to add to your communication, to add, is that we still have a little bit of money left, right? So there are some organizations, there are a few proposals that are left that will be answered and addressed, and that, that work will be continuing, right?
That's right.
Thank you.
And our, our standing committee of the whole meetings to accomplish that will, will continue to take place. I believe that still sits, that original communication still sits in that committee for those discussions to, to continue. And I want to echo my, the kudos to Vice President Keppel, because it really was, at best, a shared fifty-fifty leadership. I would say she really helped shepherd a lot of things along and did some really good work. And also, I think, as simple as it might seem to her, utilized technology to our advantage to really get to some answers and understandings quicker than we otherwise would have. So, thank you. On that motion to receive and file that communication, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item ten, resolution 202322, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor and/or director of finance or director of law to allocate $1,586,178 from the city council's portion of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the below-listed projects in the identified amounts.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, and if, if noting Vice President Keppel's technological prowess was not just mentioned, she, we had to do a little flip-flopping of iPads to find that, that communication, and, and there you have all the different projects that are being funded in this tranche of, of funding this evening. Any further comment or discussion? Well done, colleagues. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item eleven, resolution 202323, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor and/or director of finance or director of law to allocate and expend $86,178 of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for accessibility expansion at Lakewood Public Library Madison Branch.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this separated resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I don't know, this may have just been an oversight, but understanding that Councilperson Keppel will likely not vote on this, the resolution lists her at the top of it by Litten and Keppel, so I would just request that we remove that. It could just be Litten.
Sure, I can move that we amended to strike the name Keppel from the top of the-
Yeah, I don't want to, strike is an aggressive verb.
Yeah.
I can, no offense.
Well, I'll amend my motion first to move that we-
I'm kidding. Strike is good.
Strike, if that's okay, and the name Keppel from the top of the resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion passes. Move to adopt. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Obstain.
And that motion still passes.
Item twelve, communication from President Litten regarding August recess.
Yes, I won't read the communication verbatim, other than to mention that this August, we will once again recess, and I encourage my colleagues to, I discourage my colleagues from scheduling committee meetings during the month of August, if you don't mind, just for the sake of having that month to focus on our constituents and other things. Move to receive and file.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. What? I don't believe it's, it's just a resolution, is it not? Or it's just a communication? Oh, I guess I have to, don't I? Thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, I will, Law Director, I have a question. So we have an, in a ordinance that calls for us to voice-vote in order to recess in August, but we only have a communication before us. So I don't, I don't know that I can move to adopt a- Fine, all right, I will motion to recess for the month of August, including our council meetings, which would have been scheduled on August 7th and 21st.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litten?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Apologies for the confusion.
Item thirteen, communication from Vice President Keppel regarding Community Health Needs Standing Committee name change.
Vice President Keppel.
Thank you. So, the following resolution proposes to change the name of the Community Health Needs Standing Committee to one which the group has decided is more suitable. As you're aware, the Community Health Needs Standing Committee was recently established to carry on the important work initiated by the Community Health Needs Assessment Process. Its April 21 meeting, the group sought to identify a new name for itself that more accurately reflects and describes its duties and missions, and is shorter. So ultimately, the group voted to change its name from the Community Health Needs Standing Committee to the Community Health Action Team. Please join me in supporting the following resolution to make this name change official. To receive and file that communication.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item fourteen, resolution 202321, a resolution to take effect immediately to change the name of the Community Health Needs Standing Committee to the Community Health Action Team.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Bullock.
Thank, thanks for the resolution, happy to support it. The question I have would be, in addition to the proposed name change, is there other business to report from the committee? Or could we, you know, we don't have to cover that now, but maybe we could hear, hear about it in the future.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Right now, we, oh, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Right now, for the last few meetings, we've mostly been going through, as was sort of stated in our foundational ordinance, was to go through the list of action items, and going through and identifying what existing community partners are, what existing programs there are, whether those are, would require new programs, or pulling together resources from multiple programs, and kind of going through incrementally in those different subject areas. So, that's what we've been working on so far, and probably for the foreseeable next few meetings. And those meetings are open to anyone who wants to join, and open to the public, and we've been meeting at Cove Community Center. So, thank you for that, that tip. I'd be happy to share more as we go along.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to adopt?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item fifteen, communication from Director Leininger regarding authorization to sell real property located at 12900 Madison Avenue, Youth Services Building.
Director Leininger.
Good evening, President Litten and members of council. Since 1996, the city has owned the property at 12900 Madison Avenue and operated it as a youth services building through the Department of Human Services. As the Department of Human Services has relocated the Youth Services Division into the new Cove Community Center, this property is no longer of use to the city and therefore should be sold. On two separate occasions, the city solicited requests for proposals to attract the highest and best use of this former city asset. The most recent solicitation resulted in unanimous recommendation by a review panel to award a purchase contract to Lakewood Community Services Center. As shared with the committee of the whole at their meeting on May 8, 2023, the purchase agreement is currently pending review and approval by LCSC. In the interest of keeping the sale of this property aligned with the schedule for the City Council American Rescue Plan Act application process, this ordinance is being forwarded to City Council while LCSC completes their review. The final proposed version of the purchase agreement will be entered and the ordinance substituted at the determined committee meeting. And with that, respectfully request that this ordinance be referred to a committee deemed appropriate by City Council.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes.
Item sixteen, ordinance 13, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing and directing the mayor or director of planning and development to enter into an agreement for the sale of 12900 Madison Avenue.
I'll move to refer to Committee of the Whole.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, to explain my motion, just given the, the gravity and the interest, I think our full councils had in this discussion, I think it makes sense to discuss further in Committee of the Whole. And, um, scheduling-wise, should we schedule that yet or we don't want to because we don't know what might be before us fully just yet?
I'm trading voicemails with, and phone calls with, uh, the executive director, so perhaps let me make contact to know what their schedule is and I can follow up directly, uh, with you and Council Clerk.
Please, Council Clerk especially. Yes, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 17, Communication from Director Leininger Regarding Winterhurst Ice Rink Operating Agreement.
Director Leininger.
Good evening again, Council President Litten, members of council. After careful consideration of the existing conditions and operations of the Winterhurst Ice Rink, to determine if the current lease model is meeting community goals, the city determined that it is in the best interest of the community, the city, and the users of the Winterhurst Ice Rink to exit the current lease agreement and explore an updated operational model for this facility. On March 27th, 2023, the city notified the LECE of the facility that it would be terminated in lease in accordance with the provisions of that agreement. The city had previously entered into the lease agreement 2008 and was last amended in 2018. On March 28th, the city released a, a request for qualifications to solicit interest from qualified ice rink facility operators to serve as an operator of the Winterhurst Ice Rink. This RFQ outlined a new operational model where the selected organization will work on behalf of and report to the city of Lakewood versus the previous model whereby the LECE operated as an independent business within the city-owned facility. On April 21st, eight statements of qualifications were received in response to the RFQ. With input from an advisory group of Winterhurst user organizations and other community stakeholders, the city shortlisted four firms to respond to an, a request for proposal that was issued on May 5th and is attached to the, to this communication. The responses are due on May 26th and will be immediately evaluated by the advisory group and the city, including the conduct of an interview with each firm. The final selection of the operator will occur no later than June 7th. And we've actually just updated that to June 5th. Recognizing the current lease agreement ends on June 30th, the administration is requesting City Council begin discussion of this new operating model in advance of receiving legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into an operating agreement for the Winterhurst Ice Rink. In this regard, we request this communication and the forthcoming legislation be referred to a committee deemed appropriate by City Council.
Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Um, let's refer, uh, I'm sorry, I move, strike that motion. I'll, I'll move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? I, for when I noted four selected, I think I noted that the previous operator was one of the four. And I wondered if, if the administration wanted to comment on that now or save it, frankly.
I thank you, Council President. Uh, the current operator, uh, is, uh, it was identified it as one of the four, but, uh, the reasoning is, is going to be relevant, uh, when, when it's decided on what proposal is chosen. And if we discussed it and open it, might give one of the four an unfair advantage or several of the four an unfair advantage. So, w- with your permission, we would like to refrain from discussing it.
I, I understand entirely. Um, any other comments or questions? Councilman Bullock.
Thank you. Uh, are you able to share the name, names of the four that were, uh, it's not selected yet, but it's, um, it's invited, yeah, it's invited to give, uh, a full--
That's public somewhere.
--proposal.
Yeah, we can share that information. Uh, so, so the four in no particular order are Iceland Management or Iceland USA, um, Suburban ICE, a firm out of Detroit, Lakewood Community ICE, which is a local group, um, and--
Is it outside the box? Out of the box.
Out of the box, uh, which is not a local group involved in the Strongsville facility.
Okay.
Those are the four that were invited back.
Very good, thanks. Thank you. Good question. Any other further, other further, further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to refer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 18, Communication from Director Rankatour Regarding 2023 Second Quarter Transfer Ordinance.
Director Rankatour.
Mr. President, members of council, we have, uh, four pieces of legislation we'd like to, uh, present to you. One of them is the second quarter transfer ordinance, which identifies 25% of the anticipated transfers to be, uh, moved pursuant to the budget appropriations. The next three are related to the, uh, Budget Commission in Cuyahoga County. One of them deals with just setting the property tax rates for the, uh, 2024 calendar year. Uh, the other, uh, incorporates those rates into a 2024 tax budget, identifying the need that allows us to, um, levy the property taxes. And the last one is the tax advance, which allows us to collect the tax funds as they're collected instead of waiting till the final settlement. And that helps us get interest and stuff like that. So, we ask that you, um, put these, uh, in the Finance Committee for further discussion. Thank you.
Okay. I will then, uh, given that suggestion, move to, oh, I'm sorry, I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Um, as discussion of the next four, I'll probably read the four concurrently and refer all to, uh, Finance Committee. But, uh, in case there were any questions on that idea, I wanted to throw it out now. Hearing none on the motion to receive and file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And I'd like us to move to suspend our rules and read items 19 through 22 concurrently.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion, and we should recall, okay, a roll call vote. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litten?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
All right. Item 19, Ordinance 14-2023, An Ordinance to Take Effect Immediately Authorizing the Transfer in Advance of Certain Funds. Item 20, Resolution 2023-24, A Resolution to Take Effect Immediately Approving the Tax Budget of the City of Lakewood for the year 2024 and Authorizing the Filing with the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer. Item 21, Resolution 2023-25, A Resolution to Take Effect Immediately Requesting the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to Draw and the County Treasurer to Pay to the City of Lakewood in advance of all real personal property and special assessments collected in the year 2024 in such amounts as may be requested and available. Item 2022, Resolution 2023-26, A Resolution to Take Effect Immediately Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levis and Certifying Them to the County Fiscal Officer.
Move to refer those four items to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 23, Communication from Director Gordon Regarding 2023 Water Main and Lead Service Line Replacement Project.
Director Gordon.
Thank you, Co- Council President Litten. Dear members of City Council, the above- referenced project entails the construction of new water mains and lead service line replacements for Parkwood, Elmwood, and Revelly, including IWhip, sewer, and pavement improvements. The attached resolution is required in order to move forward with a portion of the project's funding. The city has secured $870,557 in funding through the water supply revolving loan account, which includes 53% principal forgiveness for lead service line replacements for the project. This 6.74 or $5 million project is expected to be funded as follows. I'll skip all that. I request that City Council suspend the rules and approve the attached resolution on first reading so that the project may proceed and be prepared for EPA funding June 1st, 2023. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 24, Resolution 2023-27, A Resolution to Take Effect Immediately Permitting the Mayor, Director of Public Works, Director of Finance and Purchasing Manager to Apply For/Accept and Enter Into a Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Agreement on behalf of the city for the construction of the 2023 Water Main and Lead Service Line Replacement Project and Designating a Dedicated Repayment Source for the Loan.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, noting on a resolution, we don't have to suspend rules, but we would have probably referred to this, this to a committee at the very least anyway. Um, any discussion or questions on this, since it's for us for the first time?
Yeah, I would just have a, a quick question, and more to my colleagues. Um, since this is requiring, or it's, uh, initiating not only application, but the spending of the money, essentially. Um, I mean, it would make sense to me that it would be referred to committee. I, I have no problem with applications for funding, but, uh, then spending the funding, I think, is something that we'd at least want to get a little better sense of the scope of the projects, things like that. Um, however, I'll defer to council. I don't have a really strong feeling on this. And also, maybe the administration, is there a, uh, is there a deadline that we're trying to hit here that, that we, we'd need this passed so quickly?
Yes. So, including our application, we have to have a resolution from council. So, and that, that funding, we need to have everything in by June 1st, 2023.
Well, I, I, I withdraw my concerns. I mean, I certainly do not want to miss this opportunity. So, I appreciate the, um, the time and maybe we can get a, a hearing on the project after the fact before we, we go into bidding or construction.
Absolutely. And we're, just so everybody's aware, we're actually going to be applying for the same funding again next year. We'll be sure to come a little bit earlier next time. This just came about the deadlines.
And it's not an actual appropriation of funds in this case that we're talking about, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct. We, we already had the funding set for this. This is the, receive the zero forgiveness loan.
Understood.
Apologies, I meant, uh, entering into contract is in the, is right, resolution. So, I just wanted to bring that. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem. Um, any further discussion since we're being asked to adopt tonight? Councilman Bullock.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. The, um, just along the lines of Councilman Rader, um, so, you know, one question, section two, the dedicated source repayment will be Water Fund 501. Maybe the finance director could characterize that, that Water Fund's ability to repay. Um, I presume it's only for the loan or the, the amount listed, I don't see on this page, of 870-some-thousand? And, and then, uh, yeah, here it is, thank you. Uh, so, is that, is that correct? And, and is that Water Fund, um, ha- ha- does it have the capacity to repay that if it needs to? And still have a balance that can't function for the other purposes the Water Fund is there to serve? That's question one.
Yes.
It would be lovely if, if, uh, you could detail it further.
Uh, this would probably be from the sewer fund. And we do have funds available for it. We will have funds available for it. Um--
So, sec-- so, so Fund 501 is the water and sewer fund? Is it the red, the legislation just says Water Fund?
Okay, so, that is the Water Fund that's identified in the, uh, in the legislation.
Okay. So, that, that, um, has more than 870,000?
It has a lot more than that, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then, second question. So, these are for 2023 construction, or at least to try to begin some of these. Will they all be completed? The break ground and complete in 2023, or could some, uh, be delayed?
So, when we found out about the lead service line, um, or Water Supply Revolving Loan Act, we were primarily focused on 2024. Um, but once we found that they would accept our application for 2023, we took a shot in the dark and they accepted it.
Okay.
Um, so, this is for construction beginning in late fall, going into 2024. And then 2024s would be in late fall 2024, going into '25.
So, in other words, the sequence of events is we've, we had these water line projects already identified. We found out about a new funding opportunity. We applied for that. So, that's the big driver of the hurry-up schedule we're on for, for the 2023 round.
Correct. We were originally just going to apply for '24, but we did our own due diligence and found we could apply for '23. So, we--
Okay.
--took a shot at it.
Thank you. That makes sense and happy to support the legislation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 25, Communication from Chief Kowchak Regarding National Police Week.
Chief Kowchak.
Thank you. Dear Council President Litten and members of council, please see the attached resolution for your consideration proclaiming May 14th to May 20th, 2023 is National Police Week. In 1962, National Police Week was established by a joint, joint resolution of Congress to coincide with National Peace Officers Memorial Day. This year, National Police Week will be observed from May 4th, I'm sorry, May 14th to May 20th. National Police Week honors recognized law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. National Police Week is a time for police officer honor their fallen colleagues and for citizens reflect on the commitment officers in our community make daily to ensure the safety of all. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
I'm sorry. Thank you, much appreciated. I'll, I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, colleagues? Chief, thank you for putting this forward. I'm glad we're doing it. Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 26, Resolution 2023-28, A Resolution Recognizing the Week of May 14th, 2023 as Peace Officer Memorial Week in the City of Lakewood.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr., uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Bullock.
I think I missed your, your prompting before, so don't want to let the occasion pa- uh, pass that we's happy to support this and thank our, uh, police force and our, in celebrating, um, Peace Officer Memorial Week. Uh, and I think it's, um, not only extremely, uh, valuable to have the, the service and protection of Lakewood police, but it's, it, it continues to be important that we, um, work to support our police and get applications in for the highest quality applicants, um, because we can't take for granted that, that, uh, people, um, are, are all going to this vocation or applying to this vocation in the same numbers today that they did a decade ago or, and before. So, it matters, uh, quite a lot to the good work that we do. And I want to acknowledge and thank, um, our safety forces. Thanks.
Thank you. Well said. Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 27, Communication from Chief Kowchak Regarding Grant From Cleveland Clinic Fairview Hospital Straight From the Heart Committee and the Community West Foundation.
Chief.
Dear Council President Litten and members of City Council, the Cleveland Clinic Fairview Hospital Straight From the Heart Committee and the Community West Foundation has awarded the Lakewood Police Department a grant in the amount of $15,410.37. The grant will be used to fund the purchase of AEDs for the Lakewood Police Department, as well as for the purchase of equipment necessary to teach adult and infant first aid, CPR, and AED. Pursuant to LCO Section 111.14B, this letter serves as notice of our intention to accept these funds. No City of Lakewood matching funds are required.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And I just have a quick question. We're probably, I don't know, 10, 15 years now into having to get AEDs everywhere we can, um, fit them, so to speak. Is this adding a number of them in the city where we didn't have them previously or replacing perhaps aged ones that, uh, need to be replaced?
This is actually for the police department. Uh, right now, we have, uh, four cars that take them out every day. This allows to have almost all of our cars equipped with AEDs so they can get to the scene quicker.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 28, Communication from the Anti-Racism Task Force Regarding the Equus Group.
Dear members of council, I'm excited to share that the Anti-Racism Task Force has identified a highly qualified consultant, the Equus Group, through a rigorous request for proposals process to develop a comprehensive racial equity plan for the city of Lakewood. They believe that the Equus Group-- They believe that the Equus Group is the right partner to help us achieve our goals, given their experience in developing equity-focused plans for diverse communities. As this is a critical step towards building a more inclusive and equitable community for all of our residents, we kindly request that this matter be referred to an appropriate committee for further discussion. Thank you for attention.
Thank you, move to receive and file, I'm sorry, move to refer that to Health and Human Services Committee.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Is that a yes?
Not really, I'm just excited to talk about it.
Okay. You can talk about it some now, you have that, okay. Very good, well, save it for Health and Human Services, then, we'll wait with bated breath. Any further discussion on the referral? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 29, communication from Mayor George regarding Pride Month 2023.
Mayor George?
Members of council, celebrating Pride Month raises awareness and provides support and advocacy for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer and questioning and plus community, and is an opportunity to become educated, engage in dialogue, strengthen alliances, and build understanding. While there have been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality, members of the LGBTQ+ community continue to face discrimination, intolerance, and hate. By protecting the rights of every individual, we enhance and strengthen the value of everyone throughout our entire society. We affirm our support for LGBTQ+ residents in our community, and stand with them to protect their civil rights and their ability to live openly, equally, and without fear. Therefore, I am submitting for your consideration this resolution that the City of Lakewood recognizes and supports the month of June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning and plus, or Pride Month, and we urge all residents to celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance this month and every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Can remember a time in our lifetimes when something like this was unheard of even in Lakewood to be able to happen, and I'm thankful that it's able to happen in the City of Lakewood. Any further discussion? Vice President Kupel?
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate Mayor George bringing this forward. The last few years, I've, you know, had the honor of often bringing this resolution forward, and it's really important that we do this for our community, it really matters. We have some neighboring cities who won't do this, and the youth in our communities feel it, and they feel what that means to them, so it's really meaningful, and I appreciate taking this proactive step.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 30, Resolution 2023-29, a resolution recognizing June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning plus month.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 31, communication from Director Gordon regarding grant of easement to Ohio Edison Company for electric power.
Director Gordon?
Thank you. President Litten, dear members of city councils, submitted for review is a resolution to grant Ohio Edison Company, also known as First Energy Corp., an exclusive, excuse me, exclusive easement to Divine Strip of Land at 12928 Berea Road, the new refuse and recycling center for the placement of underground feeder lines. This exclusive easement will be located on the southeast corner of the new refuse and recycling center. I request that city council approve and pass the attached resolution on first reading so that the project may proceed. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Director, share with me what the urgency of this matter is, or importance even, actually.
I really don't want to delay the project any longer, and this could be considered a delay.
Okay. Understood. Any further comment or questions? Vice President Kupel?
I guess, just why is an easement necessary? Obviously for the project, but I mean, what's?
Yeah, I mean, it's something standard with putting in underground feeder lines. It'll be going on the southeast corner of the new facility, it's just something we need to have with First Energy, and as I was telling President Litten, I don't want this to be something that would hold the project up any longer.
Any further comment or questions? Councilman Baker?
Yeah, and I apologize, this is more of a, are they boring or open to curiosity?
We're waiting to hear that.
Okay.
We're hoping for boring, that's what we're pushing for, so we're waiting to hear back.
Yeah, for the benefit of council, I do easements like this often in my day job, and this is pretty standard. They often don't negotiate with you on terms.
Understood, but appreciated context. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 32, Resolution 2023-30, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the Director of Public Works to grant a utility easement to the Ohio Edison Company governing the rights of the parties relative to a parcel located at 12928 Berea Road, granting access to the property for the purpose, for the purpose of utility service to the facility in ongoing maintenance.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock?
Can we just get a walkthrough for the laypeople, laypersons on city council and the public of what, where the easement is, what it means, why we think we can live with granting it, things of that nature? Is it particularly wide, I see all the coordinates? You know, just the basics of the details of what this does? Thanks.
So, in the drawing here, it's just, it shows where the easement would begin with First Energy, for them to come in and perform any necessary repairs. It's standard, as Councilman Baker said, when you're going to be putting in new feeder lines, going to a new facility for an easement to be created, for First Energy to come in and perform any work that's needed on the property.
Okay, is this located to the rear of the parcel? Is it?
Southeast corner.
Okay, so, and I can't picture the orientation respective to the building, but...
So, as you're pulling into the entrance, the new refuse and recycling center, it would be to your left, outside of the driver's side door?
Okay, so it is in the way, but they're going to fill it in afterwards, is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so, it's a part in our dust, give us the legal right to put in a service line that we need to operate our facility, and then they're going to put it back?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further comment or discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes, and that brings us to the public comment portion of our evening, for which we do not have, we do. Okay, we have six individuals signed up and one e-comment. The first person is Mr. Micah Zachem, and I believe we've got things covered.
Yep, we're good.
All right, thank you, sir. Next person is, I believe, Megan Dennehan?
I'm Denman, thanks.
Denman, my apologies. Name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
My name's Megan Denman, my address is 12520 Edgewater Drive, Lakewood, apartment 907. I'm here because I want to express interest in renewing our Lakewood Circulator bus program, and I'm excited to hear, after talking with Tristan, that that's kind of already a conversation that's been going, and there's potential grants, and I'm excited to hear that. So, I just want to continue plugging that along, and remind us of some of the benefits that the bus system had in Lakewood, and why it would be good to bring it back. So, I, along with many other Lakewood residents, feel that it's long overdue, and here are some reasons it was vital. It's good for low-income and mobility-challenged populations who rely on public transit. Lakewood has a high population of seniors who don't drive or rarely drive, and they'd be served by the circulator, which would reduce the distance they walk within the city, as you know, to get necessary goods and services. It would also be good for residents of all ages, because it relieves traffic congestion, which is particularly valuable in Lakewood on the main roads, especially around Detroit, Warren, Bunce, and Madison. It would help connect residents with local businesses, and helping both businesses and residents flourish in that regard. It'd be great for providing transportation for school-aged kids, since Lakewood does not have their own school bus system. Let's see. It would improve parking capacity, which is an issue in Lakewood, as we know, and it would specifically help with that at Lakewood Park during the busiest months, such as July upcoming, around the Fourth of July, and as the weather gets nicer. It would reduce greenhouse gas emissions by decreasing single occupancy vehicle trips, and which that would help improve air quality for Lakewood and the surrounding county. In some, we have a walkable, high-density area already in downtown Lakewood, and the circulator would fit right into this scenario as it had before, and it would be greatly used, it was greatly used and would be again, and, let's see, our residents care deeply about the environmental aspect of this as well, and I think that public transportation will become a way of life for many of us, and so that's why I'm here speaking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signing to speak is, I believe, it is Kristin Salo.
I'm just going to hold everything up because I walk so slow, I'm starting to...
Please take your time, no need to apologize.
Hi, I am Kristin Salo, and I am just piggybacking on what Megan had said with the circulator, and it would really, really help with me, especially seeing how, I'm disabled, and I'm young, and you think that somebody at my age shouldn't have to be worried about where they can go, when they can go, because, you know, I can't drive. So, I'm just trying to just shove an earworm into everybody, just to help bring it back. And, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the comment. I know there's a few more signed up to speak on this topic. I'll just say that I recall in 2015 campaigning, and this being something I was asked about somewhat frequently, particularly by the senior community, and feeling helpless at the time about if we could really do anything about it, and I'm thankful that there might be some opportunities to, in fact, do something about it. Next person signing to speak is, I believe it's Carlos Castix, or Castells? Please correct me, too.
It's Castells, and I have bad handwriting.
Good me, Bullock.
I'm also speaking on the circulator, for the benefit of, I'm piggybacking as well. Anyway, thanks to Kristin for putting a face on this, I'm going to put another couple faces on it. Back in the late '90s, our family was a one-car family, and we lived on Hazelwood behind Garfield Elementary School. I took the 26 bus to and from work, and I took the circulator to shop when the single car was available. My son was 12 that year, he now lives in Dayton. He's told me that he used the circulator regularly to go to a class at the Beck Center, and to go to other places such as Mark's Plaza, you know, just places the young teens and tweens would go to. And so, just for various reasons, the circulator isn't just for people who don't have cars, it's basically for anybody who doesn't have a car that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person signing to speak is Sharon Hogan.
I think our city has a limited amount of space, and having a lot of that needed to be used for parking is detrimental to lifestyle, and if we had a circulator, then people could get to businesses, even people who have cars, who can afford cars, and can use cars, would probably take the circulator to avoid struggling to park, taking up parking spaces, reduce emissions, and many families may choose to reduce the number of cars needed, and reduce just basically the expense of a household, so in our community, it just makes sense. So, that's all.
Thank you. And our last public speaker in person is Larice Mandak. And again, correct any mispronunciations.
Hi, I'm also here about the circulator. A bit about me, I'm Larice, I moved to Cleveland from the Philippines in 2014. Maybe you're already aware of this, but when you move to a new country, you don't exactly have a car. I just graduated from college at the time, without fully understanding the layout of northeast Ohio. I took a job tutoring in Pepper Pike. I lived downtown with my sister, and I would commute almost two hours one way on bus and train to get to my three- or four-hour shift, then commute the same distance back home again. After some odd jobs and working, I now have a car, and I moved to Lakewood in 2018. I love this city. One day, as I was enjoying Lakewood Park, I overheard a family speaking my native tongue. When I spoke to them, the mom told me they just moved to the US two months ago, and they didn't have a car. I knew how hard that was. I offered them chauffeuring services if they ever needed it. This one particular time, when we made plans to hang out at our place, it was always a struggle to find out how they could even go with two young kids, since they didn't even have a car, even though we both lived in Lakewood. But they lived on the north side of Warren, on Warren, and we lived in the south side of Brown, so figuring out how to get to us, chauffeuring two young kids was just difficult. So, even that simple activity of hanging out with someone in the same city, five minutes away by car, could be so discouraging. I have so many more stories of transplants and immigrants having the toughest time because Cleveland is a car city. Bringing back the circulator in Lakewood won't solve all the public transportation issues Cuyahoga County has, but I think Lakewood in particular prides itself on being a welcoming place. This would be an actual public benefit that would undeniably add to that vision. Please bring back the circulator, thank you.
Thank you, and I will once again note that there is one e-comment, I won't read it verbatim, but it appears to also promote and encourage the idea of bringing back the circulator.
President, can I speak to this?
Councilman Rader?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank those that came out and spoke on this, thank you. Megan, Kristin, Carlos, I carry my own handwriting, Sharon, and Larice, correct? Thank you so much for coming out and speaking, you painted such a vivid picture, I think, of all, from different perspectives of how important public transit is, and Sharon particularly this proactive approach, you know, we're often thinking about how we can do street design, and how we can do all kinds of things to limit street diets, and trying to figure out our parking situation, and how many parking spots, maximums, minimums, but in order to do that, we need to give people other options, right? And we should probably start with giving people options. So, I want to thank the mayor for actually leading the charge here, and really working hard on this in her administration, and I don't know if it would be a moment if she could give an update, or the administration could give an update on some of the progress they've made towards that, and would love to hear that. Again, thank you so much for coming out, this has been, it was a great presentation.
Given the public support here, Mayor, if you had anything to say, I think I would encourage it, but not require it, of course.
Yes, thank you, I'll just add quickly, you know, thank you for being here tonight. I'll say that we agree with you, certainly. As you recall, the circulator was run through the RTA, and so, through the years, there's been discussions about bringing that back. With that, I recently went to Cuyahoga County Council and requested ARPA dollars to convene a feasibility study with RTA to determine whether or not we could bring the circulator back. We have had at least the kickoff meeting, and I'm going to maybe turn it over to Sean for an update from there, but we are at the very early stages of that feasibility study.
Good evening again, everyone. As the mayor noted, we are at the very early stages of it, collecting background data, background information... background information, coordinating with RTA, coordinating with NOAAAC, other transit partners in the region, to get all the data so we can start to analyze that. Still some time out before we have a public meeting or anything public on this, but the project is underway.
Thank you. Any further comment, colleagues? Councilman Schachter, and then Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, and thank you very much for your comments and bringing this issue back to the forefront, because I remember back in 2019, this was a big issue people talked about, so pulled up my research from that time period, because we recognized that back in 2009, the circulator had the lowest cost per passenger and the highest passengers per trip, in that one of seven Lakewood residents did not have a car and one in 10 did use the RTA to work. However, I mean, this was an RTA decision. They operated at a loss of $138,000 in 2009. So I believe they cut almost all their circulators except for one. So in my mind, at least back then, I don't know what the result of this feasibility study would be, but knowing and working with RTA in my day job, I don't see how willing they would be to have one. If we were to have a circulator, it would most likely be entirely city-funded and run without RTA. But I'm glad that there's going to be a feasibility study to see what that would actually, what the actual options are, instead of us just thinking of what they could be.
Thank you for those comments. Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. President. I was curious, the last speaker, Ms. Larisse, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your name. I'm curious, the family you described, do you think, could scooters help them? This sounds like a not serious question, but I do mean it, and of course, not for the small kids, but for the parents, could that be an option for part of the transportation needs that they experienced? If, you know, and I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to dialogue or not, but the?
Yeah.
We need, so we'll catch up after the meeting, thanks. Because, or if you wanted to share more thoughts at the microphone, thanks.
Just out of respect for our public comment process, I don't want to, like, create a conversation back and forth. If you want to talk with any of council, I'm sure we'd be willing to discuss afterwards.
I'll be happy, and just the spirit of my question was that that's a new tool that we're actively piloting right now in Lakewood, and it just, the thought occurred to me that that could be part of the solution, especially since the circulator route, if I recall, went from Madison to Detroit, so it hit the commercial areas, but, you know, it's still not going up and down the residential streets. So if you lived all the way at the southern end of, you know, town, or all the way at the northern end of town, you're still going to need to have some mobility. So anyway, interesting stuff. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. With that, that concludes our public comment for this evening. Any updates from my colleagues?
Mr. Chair, just one comment on the community circulator, and I appreciate the mayor, you know, studying this issue and, you know, everyone, it seems like we're a contest to go the furthest back. I actually wrote it as a kid in the '90s, and it did give to the point of the gentleman, I believe Carlos spoke about youth, it gave you a sense of freedom as a kid, that you can get on, you know, go anywhere in the community. But one thing, and I'm not sure if the administration is hoping or seeking to bring a member of council kind of into the study group, I would encourage that. I would also encourage to loop in the school, because I think to the schools, because we don't have buses, and the Councilman Schachter point, I think that RTA is not going to come up with funds for this, so it's likely going to have to be supported by the city and maybe the schools. So that's where I think the loop is there, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further updates? Vice President Keppel?
Sorry, I'm going to comment on this same thing, too. I just want to thank you all so much for being here, and this is your first time coming to a city council meeting or any legislative body and speaking. You don't always have to be eloquent or have big remarks prepared. Just showing up is a big statement, sitting through a whole big meeting. So thank you for being here. And I just, the community circulator is certainly something that clearly we're all thinking about. We've also been talking about the issue of transportation for those with disabilities. We've been talking about that a lot with the ADA Task Force. We currently have programs for seniors, but working on transportation for non-señores with disabilities also. So there is a lot going on, and I think as we go through this feasibility study, and we've talked even just tonight, some other creative solutions. So keep holding us accountable and keep showing up and keep calling and texting and emailing us, and we'll keep on it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates, colleagues? Any updates from the administration? Director Rankitour?
Mr. President, Council, I did want to express appreciation and accolades for Director Gordon for finding that large grant for the lead lines. I feel like maybe Mr. Bullock put the ball on the tee for me, and I might have whiffed, but that will save the money, the city quite a bit of money, not only in that one year, but of course, moving forward, and I know him and his staff, Mark Papke and Sandy Bolz are, worked on that, and they're still working on that to make that all a reality. So that's a great thing for the city, just so you guys all know.
No, that's absolutely great. I appreciate the recognition. We're clapping now, all right? You know, it's one of those things where that's not something he's called upon to do necessarily, but just something he found out of, I call it mission-drivenness. I see that in you, Director Gordon, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. You know, as Director Rankitour said, the credit needs to go across the board. We all, the entire staff, were diligently at it. Once we knew we may have an opportunity at the 2023, we, like I said, we took a shot in the dark, so we're very happy.
Very good. Well, I am appreciative to have a group of people at the tables before me and alongside me who are very dedicated to Lakewood and committed to Lakewood no matter what. Any further comment? I do just want to recognize again Patty Ryan and her passing and her commitment to the City of Lakewood as well. Talk about mission-driven. She was so extremely passionate about our businesses in our city, our chamber, didn't miss many ribbon cuttings. She was, didn't miss opportunities to get us to go to the ribbon cuttings and things like that as well. Just wanted to make sure that every business in Lakewood was celebrated and realizing its full potential through her work. And not only that, but she was a wonderful person and friend to many, and we just wanted to recognize her passing. We mentioned it at the moment of silence earlier, but wanted to make sure we said that as well. Anything else for the good of the cause? Hearing none, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. We are adjourned.